convene our August 11th special meeting. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Sorry.
I'm present.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone.
Present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present. Okay. We are in our reconvened August 11th special meeting. After much deliberation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I wanted to make a brief clarification on condition number 24. It's not a requirement of a 60,000 gallon above ground tank. It's actually a requirement of 60,000 gallon capacity. So that could either be two 30,000 gallon tanks, one 60,000 gallon tank. But it's actually the capacity that is the condition in condition number 24.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other outstanding statements? We will not be having closing comments from either party, any of the parties. I'll open this to a vote.
Okay. I move that the board deny the appeals and approve the application by Rancho Viejo Partnership, Rancho Viejo Solar LLC, AES Clean Energy Development LLC for a conditional use permit, case number 24-5200, subject to all staff imposed conditions with the following additional conditions. Let me bring up the list. Applicant agrees to use non-p persistent, non-bio accumulating, non-toxic, clean agent fire suppressant. Applicant agrees to permit county staff to inspect site compliance with hazard mitigation plan, conditions of approval and all applicable codes and requirements with at least three days notice. Applicant will submit annual report of reported abnormal readings from battery energy storage system units to the county fire department. Any agreements regarding supply of power generated by facility must be with a utility that has customers who reside in Santa Fe County. Nothing herein precludes the board from imposing additional conditions in connection with the issuance of industrial bond revenues, industrial revenue bonds, such as precluding the sale of power generated by this facility outside of New Mexico. Applicant agrees that there will be no heavy equipment construction traffic before 9:00 a.m. and no construction related lighting after dark. And this is a modification to condition eight. A decommissioning bond, which may take into account salvage value, will be required prior to recordation of the CUP site development plan. The bond must be in place for the life of the project and will be subject to periodic revisions to account for any increase in the estimated cost of decommissioning, no less frequently than every five years. Development rights must be irrevocably severed from the 5,700 acres surrounding the project site prior to recordation of the CUP site development plan as proposed by applicants and representative of the surrounding landowner during public hearing. And this board will issue written findings of fact and conclusions of law in support of this decision at a later meeting. And I will comment on my motion later on, but that's the motion.
I will second the motion.
Sorry. We have a motion from Commissioner Hank Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. We'll open the floor to discussion, starting with Commissioner Johnson and moving this way.
Okay, I get to go first. I want to thank everyone for spending many, many hours with us. This is a very challenging decision. There are a lot from all sides to weigh and it was not an easy decision that we, that I have reached. I want to recognize that there are legitimate worries about safety. And that it's very important that we have these public processes where we're able to hear from the community, gather evidence from all corners and weigh the expertise of various fields. This is a complex case, as was mentioned by the land use director. It is one of a kind, the first that we've seen in Santa Fe County and so it's, it's not easy to come to a conclusion on it. And thank you all for, for taking the time with us. So my justifications for voting, I will be voting in favor of this conditional use permit. The Sustainable Growth Management Plan explicitly supports this type of project. It explicitly calls for renewable energy development. It quotes, "Santa Fe County will be a leader in renewable energy regulation requirements, incentives, production and use, and supports renewable energy infrastructure to enhance local energy independence as a means to improve economic opportunities." The zoning code within our own code allows for commercial solar facilities as a conditional use in the rural fringe zone. This isn't a variance request and it is part of our code. A very important consideration was the expertise of our own county fire department. Thank you for weighing in on this. The county fire department has deemed the application complete and, and safe. An independent third party consultant has done the same. And as we have learned through the extensive documentation, this BESS system uses the latest generation technology, meeting NFPA 855 and UOL 9540 standards. The environmental benefits to this are extremely important to me as an environmentalist myself and as someone with a seven year old child who's, will inherit our future. It's critical, projects like this are critical for meeting our renewable energy goals and replacing retired coal plants. This project uses minimal water while also serving 37,000 plus homes, which is a remarkable rate of efficiency in our water scarce region. which is a remarkable rate of efficiency in our water-scarce region. The local generation, generation locally reduces transmission losses. It also improves and meaning decreases costs for consumers. And it's cited in a place that has the lowest wildfire risk in the county. The technical advantages to solar can't really be overstated. We've heard from many, many experts, including those in the opposition, and that expertise has helped me arrive at a conclusion that there are no ways to zero out risk. It's very important that we take seriously the considerations of public safety when making these decisions. But making the evidence that I have, that we have weighed, have shown me that there are many, many redundant, multi-layered systems for fire prevention. There are both internal and external mechanisms that will prevent the sort of catastrophic fires that have been cited and that the risk of something like this causing a catastrophe are, are actually much less than a three hundred-plus homes, than a gas station, than you name it, people setting off fireworks, et cetera. So I will vote yes to approve the Rancho Viejo Solar Project conditional use permit with the understanding that AES must fully comply with all of the safety conditions and ongoing county oversight requirements and the conditions that we have also imposed as a board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Kokari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. First, I want to thank everybody for the amount of energy, effort, expertise and time that went into this process dating back since two thousand twenty-three, particularly for our county staff and team. Thank you, AES, for putting a lot of time into all your application materials and for all those who came out in opposition and support. I want to address not just everyone here, but everyone that might be online and later be listening. We are definitely not going backwards. This process has pushed us to see solar as a critical part of our future in Santa Fe County, and we should be a leader in renewable energy. I hundred percent fully recognize the urgency of addressing climate change and the grave need to transition to clean power. I support and have always supported, as another environmentalist, renewable energy development now and solar energy. Yet, the county leadership also demands that we proceed with diligence, transparency and responsibility. Today's decision sets a precedent for how Santa Fe County will evaluate all future projects. My vote is not a vote against solar energy. It is a vote against this particular proposal by AES because it does not meet, based on the evidence I've reviewed, written, submitted and testimonies, it doesn't meet the highest standards we owe all of our communities. After weighing the evidence, the research and testimonies as evidence themselves, I find that the criteria of our Sustainable Land Development Code and Growth Management, that the application falls short to safeguard particularly the health, safety and welfare of our communities. Number one, it poses technology risk. AES was proposing outdated lithium battery systems known for fire hazards. We cannot succumb to just moving now for urgency, but assure that safer alternatives such as sodium ion or lithium iron phosphate batteries are used. Just down the road, Sandia is leading this, MIT and globally many. Battery safety and fire risk and real-life conditions are not tested just in cement parking lots matter for twenty-six thousand residents in the rest of the community, schools, a state prison, adult detention facility and many more who live in the area. AES proposes that they do have not have had an environmental impact, but yet the environmental impact report in the packet submitted by our county staff shows that there's impact on our vegetarian, vegetation, on our migratory boards, on the spotted owl, on the wildlife that's in the area and is on the landscape itself, including cultural impacts, which I heard no particular plan to mitigate or to assure that we prevent this. There is the importance of the public health impact. The proximity of this large-scale project to neighborhoods in Rancho Viejo continues to create potential hazards and can be very detrimental to all those in the area. This is critical and important. There's also an overlook in terms of the community college overlay district and the Tzusuke traditional area that we, that has been cited in documents and in testimonies. Additionally, looking at the evidence and the facts, there has been some overstating of the economic benefits to Santa Fe County particularly. In fact, people came with misinformation, thinking we would have long-term jobs. There will be two hundred jobs for one year, less than twelve months. They possibly be at forty, forty-five dollars an hour, but they are temporary. The jobs potentially that have a hundred thousand K or more are less than a handful, and AES will mainly rely on remote employment. There is, in some ways, a need for us to consider more long-term planning and consider an external risk assessment by those who are scientifically able to do so that would be very, that would, would show less favoritism to AES, but also look at the oversight and enforcement gaps we need in Santa Fe County. We need to have staff resources and real-time monitoring capacity to enforce the safeguard this projects would require. We also must not settle for minimal compliance. This is very new. It's the project, first project of its kind, but we have a duty to uphold to the highest standards of public safety and environmental protection. Until state-level regulations are in place and until AES or any developer can present a proposal that truly meets those standards with independent assessments, enforceable safeguards and appropriate decommissioning and hazard mitigation plans, I believe we cannot move forward with a yes vote today. Therefore, with respect for all who testified and with deep responsibility to the constituents, and I want to quote, "four hundred and eighteen unduplicated opposers, two hundred and eighty supporters, a hundred and twelve opposers in real-life testimony and forty supporters in real-life testimony." The others were unduplicated counts of what was submitted online. At this same time, I urge our staff and our county, as an elected official, while we have done great diligence, and I commend you for the work, to explore alternatives, smaller-scale and distributive solar projects, safer battery chemistries and colloquial locations better aligned with our community overlays and emergency capacity. With this, this is the way we lead Santa Fe County into a clean energy future, responsibly, equitably and safely. I have not taken this decision lightly and may stand alone in this decision, I am not sure. But this ground is my responsibility as a commissioner to first protect the current safety and health and trust in our county government. I can't, in good conscience, looking at all the evidence, supported as it is, and I believe and assess that if we have so many conditions that this applicant needs to meet, that it is not a good fit. It is a right move forward to go towards solar, but we need to consider the county capacities. We need to consider that our codes may not be up to speed. And we need to consider, besides our amazing firefighters, but we need to have an integrated hazard mitigation emergency plan that aligns with lithium batteries and safety and consider the cost to the county. Without a fiscal impact report, we don't know. Santa Fe County will be bearing the burden, along with our residents, not AES. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Are you going to go last then, Chair?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm, Adam Johnson gave a very thorough evaluation of all the things I studied and concluded that this is a safe project. So I'd like to say a few things about, I live in El Dorado, a couple miles from the project. I think that this project is much, much, much safer than the alternative. The alternative would be a three hundred and thirty-two home development with three hundred and thirty-two potential fire hazards, three hundred and thirty-two people who may or may not use PFAS, other chemicals, all sorts of things. We create traffic congestion in the western end of El Dorado. Right now, as it's set up, now you can't even see the project from El Dorado. The chance of fire is so minimal, again, so minimal compared to anything else. And the chance of a plume reaching El Dorado, also minimal. Whereas if we had cars and trucks next door, plumes would reach us every day. There's a gas station on Route fourteen. It already provides much worse fire hazard than existing, than this would. So I studied it. I've been studying this for literally my whole term, five years. And we introduced the new fire standards so that they would meet them. We increased their compliance with fire standards to ten feet between the the containers containing batteries instead of three feet, even safer. And so I think, I think this is the right decision. We are living in a climate crisis. Any of you remember, if you've lived here as long as I have, thirty-plus years, you remember it used to be cooler in the summer. It used to be cooler in the winter. It used to actually get snow. So the climate crisis is already hitting us, and we have to act now. We can't wait another two or three years for better technology. The technology will always improve. And we will, you know, maybe the next project will be a different technology, even safer, even safer. But this is so much safer than fossil fuels. It's, it's ridiculous. Anyway, so that is why I am going along with my proposal.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, thanks to actually this board. This has been a great exercise in us discussing. I appreciated this process more than the ones that we've gone through with all of our land use cases that I've been on this board with for two years and eight months at this point. And we were much more deliberative. We took our time. We, we discussed different perspectives, and that was unique or at least much more in-depth than we've had in the past. So I really appreciate the relationships that we've built during this, regardless of how this vote goes. Thank you to staff. You guys have really done most of the legwork. There's a lot of divisions and departments and folks here, from legal to growth management to fire, to public works, to our jails and to everybody who's piped in, including the consultants. Great job, guys. Thanks for sticking with us and getting us to where we're at now. And then thank you to the community on both sides of this issue. This is a tough thing to decide. I think we did a very good job and our staff did a good job of getting everybody in an orderly manner to us with their points of view, their opinions, their expertise, all of the different aspects that goes into this. Nonetheless, there's two sides to this, and it's not easy for them either. And so somebody's gonna walk, some people are gonna walk away disappointed today, and I'm sorry to, sorry for that. But in reality, that's where this comes to, and we have to make a tough decision here. I want to add that one of the things that we did in some of our meetings is that we really looked at some of the conditions that we could apply to this. And we haven't asked the applicant if they're okay with it. We just sort of, some of them, I think they had agreed to previously. But we did make a condition that this power goes to Santa Fe County Utilities so that while there is some low-level risk and some use of pristine ranchland, this helps us by leading by example and to providing power potentially and probably to our community here. We get calls for environmentalism and sustainability, and we're answering that call by creating a project and helping a project that will power Santa Fe and Santa Fe County. We increased the distance between containers because that seemed to be a best practice that would help in the off-chance of a fire in one container. We increased the bond requirements for decommissioning to make sure that it addresses all the rising costs and changing times. We also added the condition to make sure that the land around it was preserved in perpetuity. So if this project does go forward, it will preserve thousands of acres around it and to allow for open space and wildlife space between Highway fourteen and El Dorado and two eighty-five. And that will be good for the communities there as well. You know, at the end of the day, the impacts that we're seeing here do not exceed the impacts that we see with so many projects that we approve here, both administratively via the Planning Commission and other developments that pass through the Board of County Commissioners. This seems dramatic, but it is actually, in some ways, a pretty safe project. So that's my comments for now, and I look forward to hearing how this vote goes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to echo everything that everyone has said at the dais in gratitude for staff, for our fellow commissioners. I believe that every last one of us did our due diligence in our respect to assure that the community has the safest option for the use of that land. I do have a few, it just wouldn't be me if I didn't have a few things to say what could have been done better on behalf of the applicant and for the parties of interest. It is not new to me that people provide incorrect information to community members when something is in their interest. There were scientific, otherwise stated facts that were not demonstrated in the science. I am the only commissioner sitting at this table who has actually carried a business card that said, "Environmental Scientist." I worked at Los Alamos National Laboratory for seventeen years. I have a background in health and safety. I understand to the end of what it means, what risk evaluation is, what relative risk is, and the risk that has been assessed for this particular operation. Commissioner Hughes is absolutely right. Houses residential will carry far more impact on any type of potential fire given the equipment that has been stated will be put near the batteries and the separation of those batteries. As well, I'm the only person who sits at this dais whoever dawned a full Level A to address a hazardous material event at the technician level. What that means is I am really grateful for our chiefs who have stated that we have people trained at the operations level. The operations level is the coordination and the pulling together of a team that absolutely, I have no question, can address this type of hazard. Hazards aren't specific to a constituent. They are consistent with the characteristics of a particular analyte or group of analytes. The science holds that the risk, the relative risk to other impositions is relatively low, comparably speaking. That also being said, a big concern that I have with the applicant is you don't have the trust. And I'm sorry, but the big issue has been the trust. There have been people who have stated that they don't mind solar at all. And I'm not going to say that I don't believe there are people who don't have the "not in my backyard" concern. I understand that. But I also understand that having a trustful relationship with community can usually, can usually open doors for more consideration. And what we heard over and over was that there's a lack of trust. That being said, I do want to say something about our staff and the rigor that was put into the evaluation. It was stated earlier that there was preferential treatment given to this particular applicant. I don't believe that to be true, and we do not have any evidence of it. I do understand that there were opportunities to provide information to the applicant, and we did not do it because we were not going to give the applicant a leg up in any part of the process, just to be very clear. a leg up in any part of the process, just to be very clear. That being said, I would like to call a roll call vote, please, for the motion at the table.
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone.
No.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Yes. Thank you all. We have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is over.